The opportunity. Boss is boss.
Good evening, it's six oh five. How about now? Good evening, it's six oh five, I'm gonna call the general town meeting to order. Tonight's agenda is a simple one, it's just a meet and greet, it's just an opportunity for people to mingle and get to know each other. There are some new faces that have been either elected or appointed, there's some new staff people. So there really is no official business tonight, other than to interact and, you know, have a conversation here or there. There are refreshments in the back, some people you'll see are wearing masks, masks are not required, they are not prohibited either. So if you're comfortable, please do, if not, that's up to you. With that, I'm gonna mute the conversation and stop the recording. We will adjourn the general meeting at seven o'clock for the board of selectmen meeting. Then we will recess that at seven thirty for the annual town meeting. Then after the annual town meeting, we'll reconvene for a select and meeting until our business is concluded. So with that, could I have a motion to recess the general town meeting until seven o'clock?
Second.
Made in second, is all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are in recess. It's seven oh two, I'm gonna call the meeting of the board of selectmen to order. We, our first item of business is the pledge of allegiance, got to be first like, would you like to lead us? So three selectmen are here present, selectman musta is with us remotely, Sarah, is that better for you to hear now? Speech is very poor, Matt, are the lights lighting up in the back? Test, test, yeah, there. Okay, let's try. I'm gonna mute this. Test, test. Sarah, how about that? Is that better?
It's a little bit better.
Not really sure what the distinction is from usual, but if that's a little bit better.
Staticy, sorry.
Well, Alan shuffling through his bag, that might be the static here. The bag man. Okay, so we'll do the best we can, okay? So Sarah is here virtually, selectman Nordell is home ill and is unable to attend. So our next item of business is the approval of the meeting minutes from December second, twenty twenty one. Motion has been made to accept the minutes as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion or corrections? Sarah, give me a thumbs up if you're good. Good? She, she could call in. Sarah, do you wanna try dialing in on the phone number? Here, I'm gonna type it in the chat. Okay, there, well, this is one second, folks.
Okay, I'm here.
Can you hear us now?
Yes, I can hear you.
That better?
Yes, a lot better, thank you.
So a motion has been made and seconded to accept the minutes as presented, are there any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so adopted. Our next item of business is public participation, this is one of two opportunities for the public to address the members of the board. I'm gonna start by offering the opportunity to anybody who's here present in the room, and then I'll turn to anybody who's with us virtually. Is there anyone who's here in person would like to address the board of selectmen? Is there anybody who's with us electronically online who would like to address the board of selectmen? Okay, there will be another opportunity later in the meeting, it'll be much later in the meeting, for the public to address the board on items of concern. Now we're on to communication, there are two. One, at the last meeting, you asked me to send a letter off to DOT referencing the recently completed group five study in, as part of our acceptance of the pedestrian control feature upgrades. So I just wanted to guide you with what I sent off to DOT in referencing that plan. And the second one, second item is a letter from Carson Larson, reiterating the award procedure for the American Rescue Plan Act for the town, both in terms of local county and school district appropriations, and when we can expect those, we had, we got the first tranche in June, and we'll get the second tranche in June of twenty two. So we used, as you all know, we use one point one million for our small business program, and then we'll have to make a determination in the next couple of years as to what to spend the other two and a half million on. Questions or comments on that? Word in commission resignations, new points. So we have Karen Christensen has offered to continue service on her, on the pension board. She recently was a representative serving as a member of the board of finance, turned off board of finance, now is willing to serve as a member of the general public. Al?
Make a motion to reappoint, or actually, it's an appointment, right? Yeah, appoint Karen Christensen to the pension board.
I'll second that for a point.
Made and seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with candidate at all, I have a question with all policy. Is she representing the board of finance on that board? No, she just taking out.
No, the. Excuse me, the ordinance allows for one representative from the board of selectmen, two representatives from the board of finance, a representative each from the board of ed and the police commission, and then two representatives at large.
Should be at large.
Yeah, does that seven, does that count seven?
Okay, I'm trying to make sure.
Yeah, so she's gonna be one of the two at large seats, the at large seats are, and the representative from the board of selectmen are appointed by this, or each other body sends their own. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. This is Paul Tessa. How are you today? Oh, actually, you know what, is Ruth still here? Do we have an update that we are prepared to share on South Road, or not at this time?
I could share that some of the gym applications have accepted.
That's one of the steps in that Gantt chart to get us to conveyance, but we are still waiting on the sewer upgrade.
We are way back to the final combination plan.
So, the soft target of hitting the end of the year is probably not gonna happen, but there are a number of things that are slowing that down a little bit. Nonetheless, when it gets finished, and it will be finished as soon as we can, it will be done correctly so that the residents are protected. Any questions or comments on that?
No, I don't have to report on that in my, in my selection report.
Sorry, I don't mean to step on your punchline, right? I'd like to postpone agenda item eight C, it is not yet ready for discussion, I thought that it may be, but it is not. Have a motion to postpone that until the next regular meeting.
Make a motion to postpone item eight C.
Brother Fire Member and others.
Rob Brooke, Fire Department and Leo.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, I'm gonna put on, drop the timing date at this time, because I'm concerned about running into some legal verifications on the road.
Well, it's a, it is a negotiation, so it's difficult to, and the ordinance does provide for a remedy if the two parties can't come to terms. I don't think we're there, I think that we are substantially to an agreement, we just needed to run through some of the labor law to make sure that we were protected. We're, I would say that's fair to say, would you say that?
Yes, that is exactly.
Other discussion? Sarah?
Nope, nothing to add.
Then a motion's been made and seconded, all in favor of postponement, please say aye.
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 Opposed, no? I'd like to table agenda item nine A, which is the presentation from the Westfield State University Graduate Research Project. I'd have a motion to do that.
Make motion to table item nine A, Westfield Grad Project Presentation.
Made and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
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 We'll come back to that later this evening, Miss Paul Tessa. So you come with good news.
I do come with good news. On behalf of the senior senator and staff, we received notice this week that we received a, the fifty three ten grant for a senior bus. And even better news is normally it is an eighty twenty split, but this year it is a hundred percent funded by the DOT. For the bus this year, and should be having an arrival.
That is good.
Thank Teresa Hill, our transportation coordinator for her hard work on that grants and getting everything in on time and making sure we were part of the competition this year, because we did not receive the grant last year, so kudos to her. Thank you.
So there is some pro forma stuff that needs to happen in order for us to move forward, that any authorization from the board to enter into an MOU between the Greater New Haven Transit District and Town of East Windsor, and to fill out any associated paperwork that goes with that. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll finish that up. Thank you very much, now you can go. I would like to add two agenda items, one is a conversation concerning a contract with a company called Clearco, and the second would be a discussion of the brother fire department's request for purchase for a new fire truck. Did I add those as agenda items nine D and E respectively? Third second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, just wanted to do that all this time.
I wanna take up the Clearco thing, and this will involve the finance. So one of the things that I've been working hard on since taking office is making sure the government is as transparent as it can be. And there are ways that Amy and I think we can do the budget process a bit more clear, so I wanted Amy to come up or use podium or say right there, whatever you wanna do, just. I wanted to share my screen and show a couple of examples of what we're talking about. Everybody's familiar with what we use, this is what other towns in the area. This is an example of what other towns in the area are. So this is. So what you see here is a budget message that comes from the first selectman explaining what the processes and the timelines are and all that. And that's pretty pro forma, we do that too, I'm required by charter to submit that to the town clerk every year. But then they, they talk about other things that the software allows for, so you can give an overview of. Give an overview of where the budget is and what it looks like, this is all stuff that is a bit more plainly, plainly written as to what our budget entails, this is not gonna be something super new. But then you can talk about other aspects of this that I think are a bit more compelling. So this shows comparatives between where the budget was expected to be, where it actually is. Where the revenue's coming from. The historical revenue, basically, this is, this is a more well put together version of the charts that I had included in my budget presentations over the last couple of years. They are, when I do them, they are very labor intensive, they're also, there is the opportunity for me to have a couple of fat finger moments and get some of the data wrong. This, this program ports over with munis, so anything that's in munis shows up here, and it can be easily explained to voters where the money is and where it's been. This is one of the tools that they have that's available, you can then break it down further by looking at individual town departments. You can show what the change, in this case, this is their, their general administration, so you can see there's a decrease there, what the trend is over a ten year period. Expenditure types within the department. So it's a different way of showing the voters where their money's going. So that's, that's one of the tools that this thing does, it also allows for, you can run a full complete budget report, and ours, ours is typically what, eighteen pages, something like that? You can run them so that they are, you know, coming in. The town of South Windsor has one that's almost three hundred pages, and it explains in, in very graphic detail, very granular detail, where and how the, the monies are being spent. The other feature that this program offers is transparency, and this is something that I really, really like. So this tells you of your total budget, you can actually ask how much of the money is going where, so you can plug it in to say, I pay, you know, my prop tax bill is five thousand dollars a year, how much of that five thousand dollars goes to education? How much of it goes to debt service, how much of it goes to recreational services, how much of it goes to policing, how much of it goes to anything? So that people know where their tax, tax dollars are being spent, and how it's being spent over time. Where the revenue's coming from. It's, it's a more user friendly way of presenting budget information to people without them having to interpret or misinterpret budget data. What other points should we cover? Woman, a few words, but.
I think that's good.
So, we have an opportunity to get this, the total data package is, for this year would be fifty five hundred dollars.
Fifty six.
Fifty six hundred dollars, and then next year would be eleven thousand two hundred.
Plus fifteen hundred dollars for setup.
It's because we're mid-year time, it's not, it's not sticker shackled, it would start for January first, and they would give us a upgraded rate. So what this does for not very much money is it's an opportunity to show people where their money is going, and what we're doing with it, and how we're progressing, and what we're working towards. As we look on, Ruth and I have spent some time looking on other websites in terms of economic development outreach, and one of the things that shows up pretty clearly is that towns that are doing well are putting a lot of data forward. And we don't, and it's not, that's not a false per se, it's just that it's not something that we have historically done, so you, by taking advantage of some of these opportunities that are out there, there's an opportunity for us to packaged professional look to the, to the general public, our constituency, and also those people who might become part of our constituency, which is what the goal is. So, I think this is a home run, I think this is something that, that would make the budget process much more easily understood. But it's a contract, and I can't just enter into the contract and not acquiesce since the board. So what is your opinion of this, you know, where can we get to, and we have seven, I'm just keeping track of the time, seven minutes before we get the pause. What do you think of this?
Well, I guess that my initial question is, do they actually think they could onboard this in time for this year?
Four or five weeks.
Yeah, they said.
Be exporting units, which takes seconds.
Yeah.
Always easy, I'm an IT guy, don't forget.
They said it's two, three weeks, but we figure with the holiday interruption, that if we act tonight, we can have this in place for the budget process this year. If we don't tonight, we'll do it, we'll do things the way we've conventionally done, and you know, that'll be that, where we visit it again next year. But it's an opportunity for us to say, this is where your money is, this is where.
Do they also have the capability of, you know, changing things for their own, you know, if somebody wanted to go in and say, you know, I think the budget should take this, and they don't have that ability?
No, they can look at individual pieces of it, but every, all of the data is still there, it, it's, Amy and I had that same concern about the potential for manipulation, and it is more difficult to do, after I spent some more time playing with it, it's more difficult to do than with it. So as an example. So if you look at the screen here. So if I live in, in South Windsor, and I pay five thousand dollars, first of all, it's a pretty small house. But you can see, of the five thousand dollars, three thousand of that's going to the school. Four hundred and fourteen is going to debt service, three hundred and ninety nine is going to public safety, three fifty three is going to public works, it goes on like that.
Yeah, I really like that, but you know, I've seen other software packages that other towns have, where you can go in and kind of say, well, if, you know, what would happen if we cut this, or we added that, and you know, just so you, you know, for yourself, and know, like we kinda do when we're doing our deliberations. They don't have that capability.
Not that they demoed to us, do you remember them showing the build your own thing, I know the controller's office has that, but particularly around the state taxes, but I didn't see that in this.
Just curious.
So what you can see here is now, now what we're looking at is only how the pie breaks down between dollars spent on public safety, public works, general government, and human services. So somebody could say, oh, look, Public Works is getting, you know, whatever that would be, forty percent of the pie, well, it is, but it isn't, it's only seven point one percent of the budget. Public safety is eight percent of the budget, and all those numbers are great out here, so that you can see somebody manipulated that data. So I think, to me, that answers the concern that we had initially had. I think for fifty five hundred bucks, it's worth it, if we don't like it, we can always stop using it, but the towns that are using it, it's like, it's Woodbridge, South Windsor, it's Pollin, it is. There are more.
This looks like a three year contract?
Yeah.
If they didn't like it after the first year, can we get out of it?
I would assume so.
Well, yeah, it does, because you could, not appropriate for that.
That is something that we include in the budget, if the ultimate board of finance decides that they don't like it, they wanna cut it for the voters, then it was an attempt at being a bit more transparent.
No, I think it's worth the shot, I think that our biggest problem is getting information out, and so this is pretty much everything in the cost of a lot.
It also generates a digital budget book that is, it basically takes the best aspects of the annual report, and what we would put in our budget mailer, the budget presentation, and puts it all together, and you can pick and choose the aspects of it that you want, so if you're not particularly interested in the capital program, as an example, you can run the, the digital budget book without having capital included in it, so it's kind of a built to interest program. Pretty, I can't see you anymore. Sarah?
I had a question similar to Alan about the timeline, which was covered, but I do agree that the more information we can get out to the public, the better, so I would be in favor of this.
Any concerns, questions, comments?
The only question I have, and I think it's a good program, because I have opportunity, a little bit of time, maybe the only day going over, that the attachment they just sent. I think it will help us during the winter process, that people will get the right information off the system, rather than probably second guess what things are, I think that is better for that, that process. But, my turn is with the board of ed. The board of ed is separate, and then, but they go to our unit system with their stuff.
The board of, yeah, the board, we would get the total, just like we do when we put together the, the budget that goes out to the public. The individual line items within their uniform charter accounts and all that, is the separate software package that we're not contemplating, right? I haven't had a chance to talk to Dr. Tindern about it, he's going through some changes in his budgeting process that I don't think this would be the right, you're gonna take that on anyway.
And I agree with that, but moving forward.
He could, yeah, there's another application that's specific to boards of education. Do we wanna keep discussing, because we have one minute, so I need to pause this, so do we wanna make a motion or keep discussing?
I can make a motion if you want, I'll make a motion to allow the first one to enter into contract with Clearco offering software package.
Is there a second? Second, made in second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to recess the board of selectmen?
Make a motion to vote in recess.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're in recess at seven thirty, I'd now like to call to order the town meeting. First item of business is the election lottery, are there nominations?
If I could tell me, not my, the moderator.
Are there other nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations? There's a second. Motion has been made by Rebecca, seconded by Tom. All in favor of closing nominations, please say aye. All of you, Jason Bowser as town moderator, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks. Now I'm gonna ask the town clerk to read the town meeting public notice.
Okay, Town of East Windsor Annual Public Town Meeting Notice. The legal voters of the Town of East Windsor are hereby warned that a town meeting will be held in the John Daly Junior Meeting Room, Town Hall, eleven Ry Street, Rucker, on December sixteenth, two thousand twenty one, at seven PM for the following. One, to consider and act upon a resolution that the reports that first selectmen, town finance director, treasurer, and other town officers be accepted as printed errors and. And other town officers be accepted as printed errors and omissions accepted. Two, to consider and vote on the recommendation of the board of selectmen pursuant to Connecticut General Statute seven dash nine B. That the hours for referenda held by the Town of East Windsor in the calendar year twenty twenty-two be held from six AM to eight PM. Three, to consider and act upon a resolution authorizing and empowering the first selectmen. And town finance director treasurer to borrow from time to time on behalf of, in the name of the town for the purpose of. Meeting current expenses until the tax monies are available. And to issue notes for same and to determine the amount of such notes and to execute, sell and deliver the same. Four, to consider and act upon a resolution authorizing the selectmen as provided in chapter two forty, part eleven A of the General Statute. Of the State of Connecticut Revision. Of nineteen fifty-nine and as amended to enter into any and all agreements with the commissioner of the Connecticut Department of Transportation relative to the expenditure of any. Unexpended bounds of highway funds. Lockman due to the town on July first, two thousand twenty-two and to enter into an agreement with said commissioner concerning the expenditure of said allotment. Needed at East Windsor, Connecticut, this eighth day of December, two thousand twenty-one, East Windsor Board of Selectmen, Jason E. Bowser. First selectman Sarah Muscat Selectman, Charlie Nordele Selectman, Marie Justusette Deputy Selectman and Alan Baker Selectman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, now I'm going to read the statement of the eligibility to vote. This is from Connecticut General Statute seven dash six. At any town meeting other than a regular or special town election or at any meeting of any fire, sewer or school district or any other municipal subdivision of any town incorporated by any special act. Any person who is an elector of such town may vote. And any citizen of the United States over the age of eighteen years jointly or separately is liable to the town, district or subdivision for taxes assessed against him. On an assessment of not less than one thousand dollars on the last completed grant list of such town district or subdivision. Or who would be still liable if not entitled to an exemption under General Statutes subdivision seventeen, nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five. Or twenty-six, section twelve dash eighty-one may vote unless restricted by any provisions of any special act relating to such town district or subdivision. So if you're a registered voter or if you're a property owner in Town of East Windsor, you're eligible to vote tonight. I'm now going to ask whoever has resolution number one. To please read the resolution, move it in the last per second.
Consider and act upon a resolution that reports of the first selectman, town finance director, treasurer and other town officers be accepted as printed errors and omissions accepted. Move the foregoing, foregoing resolution be adopted.
Thank you, sir, is there a second? Motion has been made by Alan Baker, seconded by Kate Carrie Trump, any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion on the resolution, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no, resolution is adopted, who has resolution number two, yes ma'am?
So to consider and vote on the. To consider a vote on the recommendation of the board of selectmen pursuant to Connecticut General Statute seven nine B. That the hours for the referendum held by the Town of East Windsor in the calendar year twenty twenty-two be held from six AM to eight PM and move foregoing resolution to be adopted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion seconded by Alan Baker, any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? So Carrie, resolution number three.
If I could tell me, there is more right streets, consider and adopt, act upon the resolution authorizing the power of the first selectman and the town finance director slash treasurer to borrow from time to time. On behalf of and in the name of the town for the purpose of meeting current expenses and still tax. Monies are available and to issue notes for same and to determine the amounts of such notes to, and to execute, sell and deliver the same, I move the foregoing resolution be adopted. Second.
Motion made by Rebecca, seconded by Nicole, any discussion on the resolution? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Resolution number four.
Resolution number four, to consider and act on resolution authorizing selectmen as provided in chapter two forty, part one, two, A. General Statutes of State of Connecticut Revision of nineteen fifty-nine and as amended to enter into any. And all agreements with the commissioner of the Connecticut Department of Transportation relative to the expenditure. Of any unexpended balance highway funds allotted due to the town of July one, twenty twenty-two. And to enter into agreement with said commissioner concerning the expenditure of said allotment. To foregoing resolution to be adopted.
Motion has been made, is there a second? Second by Rebecca Talley, Tom Buckland. Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion on the resolution? I'm sorry, did somebody have something? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, so Carrie, no other business to come before the town meeting, I ask for motion to adjourn. Motion has been made in second and it's not debatable, all in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Opposed, no, we're going to reconvene the meeting of the board of selectmen in a, in a moment, I want to give the students an opportunity to set up, so we'll call that back to order.
Nikki Deadwood. Nikki Deadwood, Michael Franklitz and Thomas Howard. Jason Bowser, I wanted to formally and publicly thank for all his efforts, he says that we met most Monday nights, but. It went way beyond that, there was a lot of emails and there was a lot of things that he did in his own time, so I want to thank him for that, I know the group is very grateful for that. There's two members that aren't here, one is not here for certain sentences, we are patrol, Lindsay Corbett, and then there's Chuck Castello, he. I believe was going to try to log in, but he may not be here, but he was instrumental in making the presentation for us, so he's, his name is up there and then. You guys were introduced to, he was our professor and leader on that, so. As we go through the process, you could see that our names are up there, so that, that's what my was, our first screening, Nikki, if we can click through. You got to come closer.
May not be prepared. We get that, right? So introduction, what is the purpose, we wanted to take a look at the various departments that work with permitting. And see if there was some better way through interdepartmental communications, through technology that we use. And other things that are involved in the permitting process and see if there was some enhancements or recommendations that we can make. So that's sort of like why we started this, we worked with the departments, the public works, building department. Planning and development and the North Central Health District, there are other departments that are involved in the permitting process, there's zoning and has an impact. Some impact on sewer, we, the WPCA is also about that, I'll talk a little bit more as we get through this. But we didn't, we didn't interview anybody or involvement in this process, we stayed with this residential, basic commercial permitting. Next slide. Research questions, how efficient is a permitting process when we look at the economic development and the customer service? Why is this examination important? Our project, we wanted to look at and see any town, I shouldn't talk, any towns. Development, economic development is important to stay competitive with towns around and responsible economic development. Part of that process is following the laws and permitting is a huge part of that, and everybody in here should be, or should have been, had permits in their life. So the permit process can become complicated if you're from your building, just a shed in your backyard to a developer that wants to come through with a much larger. Development, so we wanted to look at how that process goes through East Windsor, the different ports that it would go through. How it would work efficiently with technology that are currently existing, so basically the question became, what are we doing really well in East Windsor and what can we be doing better? And you'll see some, some surveys that we go forward, but Jay, if you click it to the next screen. So to do this, we started off with a robust project and we, we narrowed it down through some research and time constraints to two groups, applicant groups and employee groups. Next screen, so the applicant group, it consisted of a random sample of recent. Permit applicants, applications that happened in Town of East Windsor, we went back about a year, we worked with Joe Sarropper, who is the deputy director of public works. He worked with the vendor that they currently use permit link. And was able to pull off some of the permits, both of the permits for the last calendar year, we then developed survey questions in our group. And we sent those survey questions out to the applicants with various questions that we're going to get into, Thomas is going to get into in the next couple of slides. So we, we got feedback from them through questionnaires and survey, next slide. The, the next group was the employee group, the employee group was basically all the employees we, that were in the. That worked in the building, the public works, the, the two public works, we did director, deputy director, we did. The building department, we did the planning department and one member of Central Health District that works with County of East Windsor. So we surveyed all of them and then we followed up with interviews with the department heads. And that's how we got the feedback that you're going to see moving forward, and I believe at this, I'm going to pass it on to Thomas, who is going to go through the data.
Also, angle myself so I can.
Do you want to move the podium so that you can?
Oh, yeah. Try. Do you want me to move over here? You know what, I'll stand right here.
All right, hi everyone, my name's Tom Howard, I'm going to be talking a little bit about the. Results that we received from both, both of the surveys from the applicant group and the employee group as well, you can go ahead and change the slide. First of all, just starting off with basic demographics, we looked at how long individuals were employed with the Town of East Windsor, as you can see. You know, the majority, you have a lot of fifteen years or more, more waiting towards the total of ten to fourteen years. With, you know, sort of a significant portion, forty percent being new employees and that'll come a little bit into play later with some of the short answer questions that we asked, but you can go ahead and flip to the next slide. Another important question we wanted to evaluate was, you know, our resources versus staffing, so we had, we sort of based off of the. Preliminary information, wanted to know what sort of issues, did they think there are issues in terms of the number of employees that were there? As well as the resources that they had, as you could see, a lot of people think they have adequate resources, but also a lot of the employees thought there could be more employees covering the ground, next slide please. So lastly, we want to talk about communication, which is, you know, both in the majority, a lot of people think that the employees communicate effectively. Only a small portion are unsure, a little, a few disagree, but that is overwhelming majority who think people are communicating well, next one, please. So just to synthesize some of the internal results, when we get into the, more of the applicant group, unfortunately, we weren't able to share, you know, specific answers. From the employee group due to confidentiality. In order to summarize what people were bringing up, which was really, really interesting, we had a lot of great feedback and a lot of creative and thoughtful answers. You know, people expressed that the time process could be better in terms of streamlining permits, some people thought, you know, they could. Have a system where they could prioritize permits, where, you know, something like, like Jason was saying, something like a shed, you know, that could take only a little bit of time versus, you know, a new department store downtown. Prioritize those smaller dependent projects, but another theme too was, you know, going into. Customer, you know, customer outreach and employee outreach with these applicants to permits, you know, a lot of people were saying that. They felt like they were communicating well with each other, but they weren't able to really portray that message to everyone's questions that they had in permitting process. They thought we were slowing it down a little bit, they also thought that there could be a better system electronically for the permitting process, some people liked the electronic process, but others complained that it was. Slow, that was clunky at times and it was a little bit irritating when, you know, they were trying to understand and help people using this current platform. So please feel free to go to the next slide. And on to the applicant group, the consumer group, so this was super interesting to sort of talk about how thoughtful the employees were and really, you know. They were really open to selfism upon themselves to make sure that they were understanding and, you know, giving us great feedback with the consumer group, it was almost universally accepted that it was a positive experience. We have everyone here that saying that it was a positive experience elsewhere from a different town that they have experienced from a different town, next slide please. And then they have all the consumer experience, right, which, you know, you can see the, the blue color is excellent and the red color is good. So no one was satisfactory, everyone was in the majority that this was a good experience overall and that they would. You know, later on, we'll get into a graph that talks about the recommendation, but also too that it was streamlined too, that was a concern of the employees thought it could be better, but everyone thought it was completed in a timely manner, next slide please. So this is a little bit interesting too about how the employees are bringing up, you know, how. There could be a little bit more outreach with the, with the people who were, you know, performing the, the permit with employee, employees at. The, you know, East Windsor Town Hall in order to make the process better, you know, less questions, if you don't have questions, permitting process is faster. But if you do have questions, if you turn around in a timely manner, that speeds the whole thing up and people are satisfied, so it's very interesting to know that. A lot of people thought it was easy to understand, you know, all of that is in the five, five or being higher, being excellent and good, and then on a scale of. Of one to five, you know, talking about being able to answer your questions, only a few people thought it was a neutral response, everyone else thought it was good, next slide please. And, you know, wrapping up the whole reception of customer service. Again, talking about was really great in terms of communication with only a few people having a negative response, keep going. And lastly, so this is, about Matthew, mentioned the competition between other towns that. East Windsor is essentially competing to bring in this business, if the permitting process is efficient, then you can keep that distance, right? A lot of people said that they would, that they would recommend East Windsor as a place to, you know, to build, to live, develop. And only a few people had a neutral spot, so still overwhelmingly in the good, and next slide please. And just to wrap up the short answers, we didn't actually have a lot of short answers, a lot of people opted to keep those boxes empty. Which is interesting because we got the most interesting results from the employees from the short answers, right? So this was, you know, a positive and a negative thing, a negative being we didn't have as much to critique in this section from the applicants. But the positive is, you know, consumers think you're doing a great job and you're keeping it up and, you know, they don't, they said. And the responses that we did get, right, they said, you know, keep doing what you're doing, it worked out great, I would only change this one thing. You know, and looking forward to continuing to work, and I'm going to pass it off to my fellow team member, Michael.
Thank you. Onto recommendations, one of the biggest recommendations that we came up with was adding an exit survey when. Completing the permit process, this way you'll be able to garner feedback from residents and business developers. As soon as they finish the process, one of the things we were worried about with our results was that. Some of the people contacted haven't actually been moving through the permit process for several months now, because it was already completed, this would allow you to. Generate more feedback and if needed, make corrections or recommendations in the moment. A large thing that came up was adding some sort of PR position for outreach and support. They're tasking this with someone who already has other duties within the town hall or creating another position, essentially though. One of the things that came up in our interviews was that a lot of time is spent answering the phones and tracking down where exactly someone is in the permit process. a lot of time is spent answering the phones and tracking down where exactly someone is in the permit process, which takes away from the time that could be used to move people through the process. So if you were to add someone with a point position where they would be able to look up, find the status and give that information, it would allow your, our employees to work more quickly. Additionally, this person could um, do outreach, which means that they're going into the community in the fall and in the spring when people are more likely to build or need to get a permit in order to store something. Um, by being proactive about the process, you can ensure that not only are people moving through it quickly, but they're not experiencing unexpected delays with not knowing that they needed a particular permit or another. Um, one of the things that came up in our interviews was a suggestion for a universal permitting software and that it might be incumbent upon the town to reach out to state legislators to um, push for a statewide, universal system. And that if everyone is using the same system and everyone moves through the system at the same speed, um, then East Windsor can develop uh, protocols or um, incentives to bring business in if the only question is like how, like why one town over another, if the process is universal. Um, with your great location being so close to the highway and uh, the airport and whatnot, there's a lot of incentive for businesses to come here. So if the system was universal across the entire state, there's, it would be more likely that businesses would want to come here. Finally, um, we thought that data sharing and collaboration with other municipalities would be important if all of, if you reached out to the surrounding towns and all of you were using the same software. Um, or using similar software, that way again, it goes off of the universal software for the state, but if all of you are working together, then you can develop businesses or like a business development um, working group across different towns. Um, additionally, um, one of the things that came up in the interviews was that your leadership and teams are already working collaboratively with um, other towns and whatnot in order to hone best practices and gather data about how to move the process along more effectively and efficiently for applicants. And then we move on to questions.
I, I'll start off and then I'll go into members of the board. If there's members of the audience who would like to ask questions, you guys are open, so I'd be happy with that. So the recommendations that you, you talked about. It's, it's, your recommendations are eerily on point with something that hasn't been published yet. Um, the, the Capitol Regional Council of Governments is our regional planning entity, represents thirty eight towns in North Central Connecticut. And two of your points are going to be their legislative initiatives this year, uh, which is awfully impressive uh, that you guys would hone in on that. You, you, I, I think that's a pretty good indication to hit, that hit the nail on the head. Uh, they're going to be talking about universal permitting software and data collaboration as part of the RFO. I just want to say that I, that I did a job identifying something that's actionable. Um, the same thing with the exit surveys. Uh, we, when we had talked in the uh, research portion of that, that seemed something like, until we had had the conversation, I can't believe I hadn't thought it. And then as soon as, as soon as that had come up, it's like, well, that's, of course we should do that, but you know, but it, it didn't come about until you guys showed, uh, had shown a light on it. Like, I thank you for that. So I think, questions, comments?
I have a question for the first gentleman that spoke. Um, you were going over the second gentleman that spoke, only going over the consumer responses. Yeah, it said you had fifteen out of four hundred seven responses.
Correct.
Um. Any idea why others didn't respond?
Right. Um, this is why we recommended the exit survey. Um, just depending on, you know, um, I was looking at synthesizing the data, but Matthew was primarily the one um, sending out the responses, right? We had about around seventy five bounce backs if, of, of that pool, right? So if you're thinking about bounce back emails, you're thinking about, um, you know, we tried to uh, we tried to send out emails for anyone who had submitted through the permitting process, you know, that loss of communication. Um, some people are going to be checked out, you know, it's around the holidays. Um, when we started sending it out, it was a week after Thanksgiving. That was a, that was an element to it. And that was why we recommended the exit survey, because people are still tuned in. Um, you know, all of our people are not looking, this is only one element of their process, you know, um, they're not living in the, the building and permitting zoning world. Uh, and by the time that they moved on, they probably already completely forgotten about this, like, well, it's not really relevant, so our answer anymore. Um, make sure that the consumers were really dialed in with that exit survey. We get the, the best feedback.
Yeah, I, I had said, Jay and Elvis, I had sent out emails initially in blocks that came from perfectly. And then I would email Jay those emails and he would follow up with a letter explaining why we were doing it. And I think uh, we did, obviously did a great job sending it through, so it wasn't, it just wasn't a link out of the email. It was like a Google form, but you know, you, I think people see that in their regular email, they just blow by it. They're not like, you know, all the scams and the, the things that come on and uh, spamming emails and stuff like that. That's why Jay's, uh, Jason's um, email helped with that. But I, I will say this, that I myself clicked through some of the surveys that I get and I would just go right by them. But now that I know there's some poor graduate student on the. I just wanted to say that, please, I will, I promise myself that I will answer these now because you're developing the bigger things. So I would do that if you guys did.
Will I take the survey now?
And with the exit survey, I was live, trying to fill a shed.
And then one more question here, um, the public relations person?
Yes.
Um, what office are you looking toward that? Or it doesn't matter what office?
Uh, maybe, what, it didn't really matter as to what office it went in and the thought process was more either if you were able to add that, those duties to an additional, to someone's current tasks, or if you were in development of a public relations position or something, this would be one of the portfolios that they would work on as opposed to tasking someone in particular.
We also thought that, you know, with that um, redistribution of depending on, you know, if it's a new person or just uh, depending on how you're evaluating uh, employee duties and job descriptions. Um, if you had one person, it sort of solves some of the other issues that the employee were bringing up, like the software being too clunky. You know, um, depending on, you know, what the future holds, the, the state and, you know, hopefully getting that, that statewide um, software. But uh, depending on, you know, it might be a picture poison between, you know, this is the permitting process that, that the voters want. Um, it's in the budget. Um, but you know, unfortunately, it's a little clunky. If you have one person, um, you know, really understanding that, that software as well as fielding all these questions, you know, that, that increases the efficiency time, make sure that, you know, um, if, 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 if a town of East Windsor employee gets a question, but they don't know how to answer it, instead of, you know, that question being unanswered, they're referred to, they must be aficionado of the permitting process and the appropriate software.
Thank you. Um, if you guys will come in and do it, that's very much appreciated.
Of course. Thank you for having us. It's a big, beautiful reception, beautiful building.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Uh, I'd like to echo everybody else's comments and thank you. I know it was probably a lot of hard work and it's, it's enlightening and I was also thinking of the exit survey because feedback from like all our customers basically is, is something that we're always starving for. Um, and so when we're making decisions like, do we upgrade the IT infrastructure? Do we, you know, go with this particular budgeting software package? You know, it's nice to have that kind of information. So I think that exit survey would be great.
Do we, do we consider funding another position?
No.
No. Well, I mean, that could be, that could be something that, that real time data from, from people who are using the service uh, provide. And PR position is also something I was thinking about the budget.
Sometimes more is better.
Sarah, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm still here. Um, I'd just like to echo everybody else's comments. Um, and just thank you very much for your work and thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there members of the audience who have any questions or feedback for the students? Really? Okay, there we go. You, you sir, and then your, name and address, please.
Jim Richards, twenty seven Pleasant Street. Um, it's kind of funny what you talked about in economic development commission the other night. We were already discussing some of this. And hopefully, your presentation will get those no votes out of the budget process. Um, but you get on, everything Ruth said is what we've heard from the business community up to this point. Um, and the pitfall you hit on, exactly what the businesses are saying. So you have a job well done, are just enjoying the whole thing. That's what we've heard and now we got approval of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's encouraging that you say that because it shows that we were on target, we're way off.
We learned something from class.
Yes, we did learn something from class. We're on target. Other professor had to work hard with us, but uh, we, we got there. And uh, this will actually uh, we're developing a paper that we'll submit and then we'll only share with the select board. So there'll be written documents, a little bit more robust than the presentation. Excellent. I, I look forward to reading that. Yes, sir.
I'm down reading twenty three Wright Road. I think it's a great idea to have one person to take all phone calls. Then the person at least knows the resident or whoever going for the permit, they have a body somewhere to put with them. They're not calling randomly saying, I'm looking for information. At least one person can always be that person, like that lead person.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I wish I'd been included in the survey because a couple of years ago, I applied for a swimming pool permit. During the pandemic and uh, had some issues with the process. And I, I think Jason mentioned earlier that uh, if you're putting up a shed or a swimming pool or something simple like that, that there should be a way to expedite that. A simple application with all the bells and all the uh, boxes checked. Should be able to be uh, moved through the process quickly, but I hope that's going to be addressed. Um. Alright, so I appreciate what you went through. I think I might ask you the answers a little bit. Especially if it was a couple of years ago when I was waiting for that permit and it was turning to mid-August and I still hadn't put my pool. I might have had a different. Better and positive lengths on.
Everybody, our recognition is to get at nine ground zero, close to ground zero, because we might get those traditions.
That's, that's what I was saying. That immediate feedback would be very helpful. And maybe it would, it's better than waiting here.
I, I don't want to uh, to steal her presentation, but, but Ruth and I have had a couple of conversations about software that is available in other towns that does provide that status and, and update as to where you are and where you need to be. So.
The other comment, comment I would make on the permitting process is that at the time I was applying for my swimming pool permit, when I called the office, the response that I got was generally not very positive. The response that I got was that under state law, we have, I forget what, thirty, thirty days to respond to the permit application. And then I crashed a little bit and then I got the response that, well, because of COVID, we actually have an extra ninety days if we want to take it to respond to the applicant. Um. It was uh, was a frustrating process for me. Um. Appreciate your response and hopefully that'll, that'll uh, although I'm sure there's already been improvements in that process, I'm sure the result of your work will result in even greater improvement. So thank you for your work.
Of course. I just got one question for you.
Yeah.
Did you ever pitch pool?
Yes. My, uh, my grandson was living with us during COVID from New York City. And uh, the purpose of the pool was primarily for him. We got the pool put in and a week later, he went back to the city.
I just wanted to make a comment that it looks like a lot of our recommendations are being implemented, you know, with uh, Jason's example of, you know, South, uh, you know, it was the South Windsor. Um, South Windsor's software permitting uh, process, or not permitting process, but um, their budgetary process. Um, so it looks like a lot of the things that we're recommending, and this was scripted, you know?
I didn't know what you were going to say.
Yeah, exactly. It just seems like it's lining up and uh, you know, thank you for your feedback and it's, you know, was greatly appreciated and was very beneficial to us.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
It's really important to work when you study this kind of issue because this is what uh, gives people in the community a sense that uh, their town government cares for them and cares for their needs. So really nice work. Thank you.
It, it was a great opportunity to work with graduate level students to address the need for the community. I, I'm, I'm very appreciative of the opportunity and the good work that you guys did. I also, you know, just to give them a plug, I would say it was particularly helpful having Officer Devlin and Lieutenant Carl uh, as part of this because they had some, some personal familiarity with the processes, the personalities, the issues that we might face. That I really think added a lot of value. Other questions or comments for the group? Thank you folks very much. I really look forward to reading them.
Yeah.
Good job.
Thank you.
You guys are certainly welcome to stick around. Um, we have a couple more things uh, to do, otherwise wish you all a very Merry Christmas.
Nice, that won't be nearly as interesting.
Yeah, we only have a couple of things. Okay, so returning to the call of the agenda, I'd ask that we take up agenda item nine C, uh, which is tax refunds.
Make a motion that we always have. I love new business, nine six, tax refund.
There a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sarah, this is, this is your item?
Um. Okay, go ahead.
May not have it. Okay. Okay. Make a motion that we accept the total tax refunds of two thousand seven hundred and twenty one dollars and eighty six cents.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, ninety, discussion of Robert Fire Department request for purchase. So just as an update, um, they, uh, the Robert Fire Department is in the process of issuing uh, or requesting um, qual- qualifications for purchase of a new fire truck. Uh, because they are a town department, that it's going to need, the awarding of the RFP is going to have to be signed off on um, by me. Um, and so I, I need authorization from you folks to do that. Now, the RFP closes on December twenty ninth. Um, they're hoping to, to get that in place very quickly thereafter to secure price. We don't know what the bid is going to be, what the winning bid is going to be, what the price is going to be. Our next meeting is January sixth. So one of the things that we can do is you guys can authorize me to accept a little bidder um, tonight. Or we can actually review the RFP submissions on January sixth and hope that the, the bid holds. Should, but I was asked to bring it to the board and ask what you guys were comfortable doing, whichever you want to do on Friday. That pretty much covers what we talked about yesterday.
So if we wait till the next one, which would be my preference, we're not holding them up, are we?
By a week.
By a week, I mean, because they're like, I think it's four hundred and seven days out in the time they sign the contracts. We do want to be expeditions if we can.
So it's, uh, it closes the Wednesday after Christmas and our next meeting is the Thursday after that. So it's an eight day.
I would think, I don't have a problem going ahead and rising, you to go ahead and sign off on that as long as it's within the uh, referendum question that we don't see office in the, that we put the referendum.
No. No, there's, there's no, so um, with this, actually, that's a good question. Do they need to put a referendum for a fire truck? Over a million dollars. It may, you know what? Why don't I? You're thinking about the two hundred thousand capital that was included in their budget that was about the referendum. That's just the way they're gonna finance it. But the overall purchase, I'll talk about it. The overall purchases likely to be north of a million bucks. So then we have to go over.
David, I couldn't hear what Marie said. Would you mind repeating it? I'm sorry.
Yeah. So she asked if she said that she would be okay with me signing off on the the winning RFP as long as it didn't exceed what was budgeted for it referendum. And I corrected that there hadn't been a referendum held on that. But it did make me start thinking, isn't there supposed to be? Because anything that's over a million dollars needs to go to a referendum. I didn't think of that.
No, I don't think anybody did. And I think you're right.
So that seems to answer that question.
Well, could we make a motion? We need to go ahead and sign it provided that all legal aspects have been covered.
They won't be able to encumber the money until they can't sign a contract anyway.
So we have to do it quick.
Very quick.
If you get a little bit of price to go up, you know, it's gonna go up. Everything is going up every month.
Plus their days out goes up.
Yeah.
And the way they're gonna finance, they don't want to let it go forever. So rates are good now.
Let me ask the town attorney how to handle the the potential cost considerations. Maybe I'm not sure if it would be different because it's a lease purchase versus not a bond. But it is an appropriation. So I need to I need to check the charter. Okay, that satisfies that, I guess. If need be, if there if there is an opportunity for us to expedite it, I'll call a special meeting to do it. Okay, sliding through this. Over the last few weeks, I've shared with you, I've shared with the community requests from our community services department for hams, turkeys, gift cards and toys. Our community has very generously answered that call. Because of the support from the community, we will be able to provide two hundred and nine families with holiday food baskets and a hundred and sixty nine children with toys to open at Christmas this year. That was information that I included in my call last night. I didn't share in the call last night. Without any name, I will share that. We had a gentleman write a thousand dollar check for turkeys at Thanksgiving. And when I put out the ask last week, he wrote another thousand dollar check to benefit the the work of community services. And out of respect for him, I'm not gonna disclose who it is, but I did send him a personal note of thanks for his generosity. That was remarkable. Robert Elementary School held a food drive to benefit East Windsor Community Services. The product of their work was handed out today as part of the food basket distribution. They collected more than two thousand items for families in this community, just at the elementary school, which I thought was worth including tonight. We talked about the DOT grant and the senior bus. We talked about my request tonight to do clear talk. I'm very excited to move forward for it that I think is gonna really provide people with better insight into how things work and where we've been or going. On December seventh, I was happy to join Lincoln Tech as they announced their newest partnership, which is with Penske Truck Leasing. Penske is sponsoring a new grant, a newly branded and dedicated space where diesel technicians will be able to launch their careers. Representatives from Lincoln Tech's corporate headquarters and campus leadership were on hand. So too representatives from Penske, State Representative Carol Hall and myself. Lincoln Tech helps prepare students for career oriented local jobs that won't be outsourced. You're not gonna be able to digitize somebody fixing fixing your car or welding your welding a building or anything. Those are low pay jobs that'll stay here. On December eighth, I was invited to present on East Windsor's Race Grant Program to the South Central Regional Council of Governments, which is a body that represents fifteen towns in the greater New Haven area. So that program continues to be a model that saw after around the state. On December ninth, I had the honor of being named to the as the Legislative Committee Chair and as the Secretary for our Regional Planning Agency, which is the Capital Regional Council of Governments. CROG represents thirty eight towns in Hartford and Town counties. And they are a means of advocating for regional cooperation, transportation initiatives, regionalized public safety response, improved efficiencies in local government, fostering economic development initiatives and more. It's a great honor to be able to represent the town of East Windsor and advocate for policies that'll benefit our entire community on that platform. On Friday and Saturday evenings, I had the pleasure of joining Warehouse Point Fire Department and the Robert Fire Department respectively to commemorate their annual awards dinners. Both departments have a great deal to be proud of over the over the last year, and I appreciated their invitation. Thanks to Problem Solved Brewing Company, who hosted Ugly Sweater Party to benefit East Windsor Social Services on December eleventh. I showed up thinking it was a favorite sweater party, so it was not, you know, really in vogue with the theme.
That thing I saw you was your favorite sweater?
It was my favorite sweater. East Windsor has many dedicated community-minded local businesses, and we appreciate Problem Solved for helping support the good work done in our community service department. Yesterday, I joined State Representative Foster and others discussing issues pertaining to well water contamination, root causes of that, and potential legislative strategies and solutions to address that issue. East Windsor's been plagued by well water issues like like many towns in the area for a long time. The panel discussion lasted more than two hours and more than forty five people joined in real time, with several hundred more having viewed it afterwards. Thank you to Representative Foster for her leadership on this important issue. There are two great community events that are taking place on Saturday. At the Windsor United Methodist Church, we're gonna be doing our Reefs Across America commemorative event. And then at five thirty, we will be doing in partnership with Robert Fire, doing the torchlight parade from East Windsor Elementary School to the Fire Department. On December twenty seventh, East Windsor Lions Club will be hosting a blood drive from one to six P M. at the Town Hall Annex. And on New Year's Day, the American Heritage River Commission will be hosting their annual New Year's Day hike, which begins at the end of Bellrose Road at one o'clock. This is one of the best heritage hikes in the state of Connecticut and typically draws between two and three hundred people. Lastly, the town is hiring. If you'd like to join our team, plus please check out our website. Current employment opportunities include an assistant town planner, zoning and wetlands compliance officer, a part-time planning clerk, part-time recording secretary, a part-time senior center nutrition site manager, and a part-time social services clerical assistant. That's all I have. All right.
On December eighth, twenty twenty one, the Divisional Medic, twenty twenty three, in the emergency management conference room, election of officers to play, Bob Leach, the chairman, and Darren Long is the secretary. Month financial statements were discussed and approved. Wobbit landing traffic issue from two thousand seventeen resurfaced and determined that none to the no right turn on red was in the best interest of the Route Five traffic flow. Discussion took place regarding the twenty twenty two budget request. Resident Daniel Harden addressed the commission in regards to the concern he has and will be providing documentation for future review. With Christmas season going quickly upon us, the East Windsor Police Department participated in the annual stuff cruiser and the Shepherd's Park program. These two programs are sure to bring some joy to those in need. Can't thank them enough for putting community first. I wish everyone a great holiday season.
I have three meetings to tell you about. I took the Board of Ed meeting this month for Sarah because she had a other engagement she couldn't miss. So I'll go over that first. They reviewed their strategic plan, which I thought was was a pretty quick review. And I think I won't characterize it, but if you want to look at it, it's up on their site. The high school principal gave the high school update. They were, as everybody probably knows, accredited in June of twenty one. And they worked on five priority areas, which they did fairly well. They are now working on some career pathways to, in addition to the college pathway. They are looking at three pathway clusters. One would be architecture slash construction. Another would be transportation, distribution and logistics. And a third would be hospitality and tourism. And if these sound kind of familiar, that's they were basically, they went and looked at jobs in our local area, in our town, which, you know, might be available to people. And so for people that are not going into the military or to college, these would be three other clusters potentially that they could, they can follow to, you know, to go the direction that they want to go. On the reentry front, they have implemented screen and stay. I guess this past week, and this was December eight, they had, I guess, like twenty positives. They have two hundred or at the time had two hundred kids in the screen and stay process. Fall indoor guidance sports, which is what has been happening. Of course, kids must be masked after twelve twenty three is the winter indoor sports guidance and the school can decide at that point in time. So each school will be deciding for themselves. What they found is team vaccination rates have fluctuated what they're planning and what is really happening right now is spectators are three feet apart in mask, home team attendance only. And one note that they had brought up is that the Department of Health vaccination rates for what they've recorded for kids in our school are higher than what the school is aware of. People are not really reporting at the school level, but of course, PH has that information. The other thing that they did talk about was the Connecticut Teacher Residency Program, which is an alternate route to elementary certification for teachers. And there is specifically been created to attract certified routine teachers of color. It's basically a grow your own program for getting teachers into the elementary school. So that's something that they voted to approve and they will be pursuing in the future. They currently have one thousand thirty one students. And the only other note I have is that the forty five day period for the commissioner replacement began on eleven twenty four. So for the open position for the commissioner, somebody will have to be appointed, unfortunately. I attended the Robert Fire Department Commissioners' meeting. They had seventy three calls in November at their annual banquet, which I had to miss for work. The awarded Derek Chapin for firefighter of the year, Elizabeth Hunt for junior firefighter of the year, Rich Paradise for member of the year, and Jim Bancroft was awarded appreciation for thirty years of service, which is pretty impressive. Also, the chair and the chair of Robert Fire Department Commissioners and the chair of the Warehouse Point Fire Commissioners are talking still about things that they can share to pay. So they're looking to work together on five or six different items and things that they can that they can share cost on. So that's pretty good. The current budget that the chief reported on is all in line with what they expected, except fuel cost is running high for them because fuel is just way more expensive than anybody thought it was last year. And the new truck, right now, if they were to sign up, would be four hundred and eighty days to the time. So time is of the essence there. Yeah. And previously, when they were talking about it, and I think I reported, I know I reported this before, things are just out of control. Aluminum's up forty percent. And it's, you know, the sooner you get it done, the better. The proposed budget that they they did present their first draft of their proposed budget, they still have a workshop January tenth. But currently they're at, and they don't expect any changes really, but they're at a zero percent increase for this next year that we presented. So no. Yeah, the last thing that I went to was planning and zoning this week. And as was mentioned earlier, they did accept an application for the South Road, the South Road Ownership program process we're going through. And so that'll be going through the next couple of meetings going through their process. That was good to hear. Probably the only other thing of note is that they have a public hearing open for the discussion of the draft zoning regulations for cannabis establishments in in town. So they did talk quite a bit about things to change on the on what's been proposed. And they left that public hearing open till the January meeting. So if any of the public wanted to get in on that, there's plenty of time to have some input on that. But basically, at this point in time, the town, due to its size, can have one retail establishment and one micro, what they call a micro grow operation, basically, under ten thousand feet. And so we have had interest by various entrepreneurs. And so they decided to work this through and be ready to have this in place when the program gets up and running. So more on that. That's all I have.
Sarah?
Okay, hopefully you can hear me. Okay. Due to work commitments, I was unable to attend to a meeting. So I'd like to thank Selectmen Nordeil for covering economic development. And a big thank you to Selectmen Baker for covering Board of Education for me. On December eighth, the Board of Assessment Appeals held a rather short meeting conducting annual business. The board nominated Austin Holden as chairman and approved their application forms for hearings to be held for potential appeals on both the motor vehicle grand list and grand list of October one, twenty twenty. And they set their meeting dates for twenty twenty two. On December ninth, I attended the Veterans Commission meeting. I'd like to congratulate the commission on their most successful Veterans Day five K road race to date, profiting over seventeen thousand dollars. Commission members discussed the successes of the day and things to improve on for future races. And we'll be working on a thorough checklist so things will run smoother and nothing is forgotten for upcoming events. The group began to discuss ideas for future projects and ways to help veterans in our community. East Windsor will be receiving thirty five wreaths for the Saturday's Reefs Across America, which will be held at the Windsorville Cemetery at noon. The commission selected the following officers: James Barton, chairman, Rick Webster, vice chairman, Gil Hayes, secretary, and Peter Sanders as treasurer. On December tenth, I was honored to attend the Warehouse Point Fire Department's annual Christmas Awards Dinner, which celebrated two years' worth of awards since it couldn't be held last year. Congratulations to the award recipients and thank you for all that you do for our community. On December fourteenth, the Arts and Culture Commission met and they had a very productive meeting. The commission has prepared selfie boards for upcoming events to pose for photos. Weather permitting, there will be one at the torchlight parade on Saturday, and they also plan on having one at the New Year's Day hike. The commission collaborated on projects they'd like to complete in the next fiscal year, and they decided on a number for their budget request, which is right around the corner. Submissions are still being accepted for their logo contest. The deadline is January thirty first of next year. Please submit your design, name and phone number prior to the deadline to ewartsandculture@gmail.com. And lastly, however you choose to celebrate, I'd like to wish you all a very safe, healthy and happy holiday. Merry Christmas, and I look forward to seeing you all in the new year. That's all I have.
Thanks, Sarah. Public participation. This is public second opportunity to address numbers before the selection. Is there anything anyone would like to say? Okay. I don't have a need for an executive session this evening, so a motion to adjourn will be more.
So move.
Made in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Wait, we are adjourned at eight thirty four.
It's already out.